Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the City Commission for the City of Eldorado, October 21, 2019. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Haynes.
President.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Thank you. Next, we have invocation. We have Reverend Christine Gilson from Trinity Episcopal Church to lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give thanks for this city of Eldorado, for the many gifts of its citizens and its leadership, for the scouts who are here this evening, and for all children, for our medical facilities, schools, businesses, churches of this place. We pray your abundant blessing on all who live here for their prosperity and their peace. Bless the members of the City Commission as they make decisions for the public good. Lead them in to leadership for peace and well-being. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We have a special guest, the Girl Scout Troop of 401-83, here tonight to lead us with Pledge of Allegiance. Would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? There you go. You taught your name.
Blake. Julie. Kaylin. Crystal. Holly. Ivy. Kaylee. Ashley. Madeline.
All right, thank you. Everyone rise and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you to the Girl Scout Troop of 401-83. Excellent. So moving on, personal appearances having none, public comments. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Items in our consent agenda. Packet was sent to the commission last week. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that number eight, the cereal malt beverage license, was approved at the previous regular meeting. However, the applicant had submitted the application with the wrong date, and so we had to do another approval, so that's why it's back on the agenda this week.
Okay, that's a complete new application for them if it's the wrong date?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you explain what it's for?
This is a fundraising event for the wrestling team put on by some of the parents. That's my understanding.
To be held at the senior center.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? None, I entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Five to zero. Having no old business, we'll move on to new business. Item 10 on our agenda, cemetery regulations. Packet here for some proposed regulation changes to the cemetery.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, you discussed this at a work session a couple of weeks ago. The Parks and Rec Department have submitted some small changes to the cemetery regulations. A lot of them were grammar-related changes. These were written a very long time ago and hadn't been updated, and so they just kind of revisited them, made sure that they still applied, and then they made a few changes to the fees schedule to make it more simple. The original schedule was, had a little bit more on it, and so they took out some of the things that didn't make sense and made the fees a little easier to read. We did make the change that we discussed in the work session. The deed fee refers to the Butler County Register of Deeds Office. Those tend to go up about once every year or two, and so with that, that we don't have to change this fee schedule again, we went ahead and just referred to that schedule.
Okay. Any chance to look through these policy changes? Any questions or comments on the commission?
Resolution number?
Twenty-eight ninety-five. If you will note, there are two motions, one for the resolution for the policy and one for the fee schedule.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2895, a resolution providing revised cemetery regulations for the City of Eldorado, Kansas.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Need a motion for this fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the proposed fee schedule for the cemeteries of the City of Eldorado, Kansas.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded for the fee schedule. Any further question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be resolution for the intent of Orshlin Farm and Home LLC.
Mr. Mayor, Mitch Walter from Gilmore Bell here to discuss this one.
Thank you. Mitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's the governing body. Nice to see everybody again.
You're welcome.
This, the resolution you have before you, for the resolution of intent for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds or IRBs, is something that the Orshlin Group has applied for in connection with their project that they're anticipating constructing out on Central. What they were asking for is a sales tax only IRB, meaning that they're not asking for a property tax abatement in connection with issuance of these revenue bonds. And so what this would allow them to do is take the resolution of intent, we'd send that to the Department of Revenue, and they would get a sales tax exemption certificate, meaning that all of the materials that they would use for their project, for the construction of their facility and all the associated parts of that, would be exempt from state sales tax to the extent that they're purchased here in Kansas. And so it's an incentive that we often see requested this part as IRB request, and so that's what this resolution that the city would consider would give them the authority to apply for that sales tax exemption certificate. I think it may have come up in previous conversation, because there is no property tax exemption contemplated, there's no need for notice and hearing, which would otherwise be required under the IRB Act.
Okay. Thank you. It's also is concurrent with our recent TIP district policies, so there wouldn't be any property tax.
Correct.
So that's associated with that, so that's why, that's another reason it's like this.
Because you, obviously you could not have a property tax abatement in an area where you're collecting the property tax increment to pay for a portion of the project as well.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
Resolution number's twenty-eight ninety-six.
Twenty-eight ninety-six. Are there more questions? I entertain a motion.
So this is an industrial revenue bond?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not, is this the same thing that we did for BG?
No. No, BG Products has an industrial revenue bond that exempts them from property taxes for ten years, I think.
It's the same vehicle, just not asking.
They're just using, Orshlin's is using the sales tax exemption portion, not the property tax exemption.
Okay. Oh, just for the materials?
Yes.
Right, the construction materials, et cetera.
You said twenty-eight ninety-six?
Yes.
Any other questions, Commissioner Guthrie?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2896, a resolution determining advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing, equesteration, construction, equipping of the commercial facility located in Eldorado, Kansas, and authorizing execution of related documents.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, we look forward to Orshlin's.
Thanks, Mitch. Thank you very much. And so they will, the Orshlin will, as I mentioned, apply for the exemption certificate, and they will start their process out there. As far as the actual issuance of the bonds for these sales tax only exemptions, the bonds typically aren't issued until the project is nearly complete, so this will probably just be in the certificate form until, you know, such time as they're ready to issue the bonds, but, you know, it won't happen probably, excuse me, probably won't happen this calendar year, I would guess. So. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay. We'll move on for the approval of North Main Park Playground bid.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Kevin Wishert, Parks and Rec Director, is here tonight to discuss this a little. We went to bid for playground equipment at North Main Park. The Sales Tax Committee has granted eighty thousand dollars for use next year. However, about a month ago, we started receiving quite a few pieces of information on some deals that the playground equipment makers were offering, matching grants, free shipping, lots of things that made us think it might make more sense to try to do it now, we might get a little more bang for our buck. So we did that, and we did get four responses to the bid. They are listed in your agenda item, and I apologize, this was kind of given to you short notice today, but unfortunately, because of these end-of-year deals, we are running on a very short timeline and have to get it approved in order to move forward, otherwise we're going to have to just wait till next year and rebid. We did send it to the Parks and Rec Board to vote on two of the options that we, from the bidder that we felt was the lowest and best. They split vote on it, so we need you guys to also break a tie tonight, so Kevin can come up and talk to you a little bit more about the actual playground, and we have some pictures, if you'd like to see them.
Mayor and Commissioners, we, as Tabitha said, we did send this to several vendors. We got four responses. We have roughly a 100 by 60 area that sits to the east of the pavilion, so just near the splash pad at North Main Park for the relocation of this equipment. In this packet, we asked for bids for the equipment, and we asked for a separate bid for a pour-in-place surface. And the pour-in-place surface would be similar to what we have at Summit Park, so it's not a mulch surface that we have to tend to on a regular basis with adding and fluffing and things of that nature. So, so we have the bid price for the equipment, and then we have a separate bid for the pour-in-place that we'd like to discuss as well. Do you want me to roll through the, or have Tabitha roll through the slides? How would you like to proceed? Do you have any questions?
Well, I can assure you, the playground equipment when I was a child is nothing like this playground equipment.
That's probably inaccurate statement.
And the only thing I recognize in any of it are the swings.
There were some slides, too, right?
Well...
I recognize the slide.
Kind of recognize the slide.
So, just briefly before I show you these pictures, like I said, we received four bids. We have eighty thousand dollars for the equipment. As you'll see in your agenda item, there is approximately a fifty-five thousand dollar balance in the Special Parks and Rec Fund that could go towards the pour-in-place. We don't want to spend all of that, so we are looking for some funding in some other areas, hoping that we can kind of find something in some other, in savings in some other projects or something, because Kevin relies on that fund to do some of the smaller things that come up throughout the year, things that have to be repaired and things, so we do have the majority of the funding at this time and are looking for the rest. What will happen is, if we can't come up with the remainder of the funding this year for the pour-in-place, we will, we'll do the site prep like it's going to be the pour-in-place, and we'll see what we can get next year, because we still will have another disbursement coming from the tax at the end of this quarter, so we'll have more money coming in there as well. So I have provided all of the designs, but the Parks and Rec, the staff are recommending that we go with AFCO. They have provided what we believe to be the lowest and best bid. You'll see that they're, they've actually provided three playground options, all for around seventy-seven thousand dollars, and their pour-in-place was around sixty thousand for each option. The thing that put them above the rest for us, all of the groups offered some sort of matching or discount that was really actually great for us this year, but AFCO is offering shipping and installation for free. And, and that, when you look at the other bids, you'll see that's about a thirty thousand dollar savings. And, and also means that our staff doesn't have to put it in and can focus on other things. So this was the first design. Kevin?
And keep in mind, color has not been chosen. This is just a, just a design for you to look at, so we'll visit with the Park and Rec Board about color if and when we get to that point, so.
The back view of the first design, it was a, it was more of an all-inclusive design, had everything kind of in one piece. Kevin, I think your reaction to it was that it looked too much like Summit, and so he wanted something a little different. Am I wrong? Am I right about that? I think that's what your reaction was.
I had a lot of reactions, so that may have been right.
So the first one that we showed to the Parks and Rec Board was this one, and you'll see it has two, there's one else. You have a smaller playground here and a larger one here. This one is geared to your, two or three-year-old to five-year-old kids, and these are the five to twelve. And then here is the back view of that one. This one is seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars, and the surface would be sixty-two eight. This received two votes from the Parks and Rec Board.
Is the surface soft?
Yes, it's a, it's a pour-in-place surface that meets all the standards for inclusion and for safety. So at Summit Park, when we did that approximately three years ago, we replaced that surface with a pour-in-place. It's holding up fabulously.
Design number three from AFCO, again, you'll see that there's a couple different pieces, one for the littler kids and one for the bigger kids, and then some other pieces as well. This one was seventy-seven thousand dollars with a sixty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollar pour-in-place. And again, both of these options had the installation and shipping for free.
And that's the one that you guys picked out?
The, we leaned to three. The Park and Rec Board is split two to two on option two.
I kind of like the fact that the little kids aren't right up with the big kids on that one.
Well, I think the first ones look flimsy. I think those, that, that lily pad hanging thing just looks flimsy, and I don't believe that that will withstand the children in Eldorado.
I understand your comment.
Are you talking about this right here?
These, are you talking about the arched swing? Are you talking about the?
That little weird now down, lily pads, that thing.
That we actually had on the equipment at North Main that we relocated, and it's held up well. We relocated it to the boys' baseball field.
What is it?
It's a, it's basically a stepping stone, so you step from one to the other, you hold on a post and step.
And they're rigid, they don't move?
They, they move ever so slightly, yeah.
Little bit of give to them.
Yeah. I can't remember the technical term for it, but it's on the one that we relocated.
Okay, so we already have that in town?
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't think that we have that spider web design of that in town at all.
Correct.
So you're not duplicating something that we already have?
In our park system, that's correct. At the elementary schools and the elementaries, they put a structure that's similar but different to this, but in our system, we do not.
There's not anything like that in our system?
No.
Yeah. I like a three.
I like the idea that you're keeping it on the west side. There was a lot of concern that you were going to put it on the east side, and kids were going to dart across traffic when there was tennis.
It is on the east.
I mean, it's on the east side. I like you putting it on the east and not on the west side, because there was fear that when the tennis courts were put in, kids were going to dart across traffic.
The playground equipment on the west side was what this sales tax application was originally for before the tennis court project happened. We are going to come back with another application for the west side playground later on.
Okay.
But with this going in, we think we'll be okay there for a while.
Sorry, I need to get my directions.
So what, what we need from you tonight is approval to move forward with the bid, and then we also need you, and when I wrote this, I wasn't expecting half-split a tie vote, and so I'm also going to need...
You want us to be the heavy, right?
I need you to vote on option two or three, if AFCO is the group you'd like to go with. The other options, Game Time submitted a bid for seventy-nine thousand for equipment, a hundred and nine thousand for installation and pour-in-place. Playscape submitted a bid for seventy-nine thousand, and a surface bid for seventy-three thousand, and only, and no installation included in it. They were just going to send a person down. It was going to be a thousand dollars for the first day of a supervised build, and then eighteen hundred per person after that.
What did that playground look like?
It looks like this.
Think it was that?
And then the final playground was Miracle, and they submitted a seventy-seven thousand, nine forty-eight bid, and surface and installation for a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
You get eighteen hundred bucks a head a day?
Uh-huh, to install.
What are we doing wrong?
What are we doing?
Good lord.
That one, this was the Miracle.
That's Miracle. See, that has a merry-go-round in it. That's pretty big.
Yeah, his is really, his, he went with more of a rectangular look, because we just, we gave him a surface area variable. We didn't tell him if it would.
But does, does their installation include?
On Miracle, their installation was included, but it was thirty-five thousand, nine thirty-one.
Thirty grand.
On top of the seventy-seven.
On top of the seventy-seven, and then another, and their pour-in-place was more expensive because theirs was eighty-something thousand instead of the sixty-two.
I'm not sure if we want to wrap in that pour-in-place quite yet for the...
This, Game Time's the company that got the bid for the library and Gordy Park. They're just, their pour-in-place and installation quotes were just higher.
Kevin, you have experience with AFCO?
We do. The equipment at Martin Playground at BG is AFCO.
We like that.
It's been fine. We haven't had any issues with it.
And they led, they supervised that build, Matt did, because that was a community build.
Right.
Martin.
The exciting part of this, when we looked at the bids, was the fact that AFCO was including installation. That's virtually unheard of.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, because I helped on the one, and that's a lot of work.
It is.
In fact, we had too many people there.
Yeah.
We were getting in each other's road.
What, the one at BG?
Trying to build it today.
Yeah.
Which of the people are teaming up ahead?
Okay, so there's two, two questions here. One is to approve the dollars, and one is to approve the bid, and one is to pick a layout.
Yes.
So I hear a vote for number three. First of all, there's, there's, the dollars associated with it, and as we approve this, we, we understand that, that although we're allocating special parks funds, this direction's also just giving city staff to, to proceed with this and find the most appropriate funding to, to afford with. Is everybody's comfortable?
Yes.
With that?
Yes.
Okay, and secondly, so is that?
Mayor, that's for the pour-in-place portion. We have the dollars for the equipment through sales tax.
Specifically for the pour-in-place portion.
And, and once we find the funding for the pour-in-place, we'll come back to get a, to get a definite motion on it.
Okay. So we are really approving only the seventy-seven tonight?
You're approving the bid from AFCO for the playground.
So there's only one motion? We just need to tell you which one.
Just need to add at the end of it for design number three.
Or whatever.
Okay.
If that's the one you want.
Okay.
Contractor.
I think that's why, so we'll just add per portion for design number three.
At the end of the motion.
Whichever one is, got a vote for three? Anybody else have a?
Can you flip through them again?
So here's two. Got your little thing, I don't even know what that is.
That little what?
I don't, I don't know what it's called.
Is that by the turn?
It's described in your, in your packet.
It's kind of description.
Just another seating area.
Just a water catcher.
I feel like it tilts.
But I think they're trying to establish it with handicaps?
It should be in there. It should be a more inclusive option, because, I mean, we asked them for some inclusive options.
It's an omni-spin spinner.
That thing.
I bet it has a good...
A poor excuse for a merry-go-round.
So it does spin.
They might have stolen it from a game for like nineteen, thirty grand.
And then option three has more of the musical items down here.
Does it have the bongo drums in it?
Um, I believe they're right there.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? We got mine for three.
Drive the neighbors crazy.
I'll vote for three.
You got two for three. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Flip it back to two.
Should have, those kids would never hear.
You know we should have.
That's what we should have done.
Out of what?
Should have asked all those kids if they were here.
Well, that's true. They would have known what all that stuff was.
Hopefully. Man, missed opportunity.
They were likely...
Three looks like you're getting a little bit more with it, though.
Been entertaining.
Yeah.
It would have been a great conversation to listen to.
Yeah.
I'll vote for three.
There you go.
That's three for you.
And I vote for three. So, come on, Kendra, just say two, just to spike yourself.
Three, three, fine.
All right, so I entertain a motion.
I move that since AFCO LLC has submitted the lowest and best bid for playground equipment and surfacing at North Main Park, the city manager be directed to award the bid to said contractor for design number three.
Been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. What do they plan on installing?
It's quick. It's quick. The shipment date, I believe, was in early December.
Yeah, they, they want to ship it with, I think it's within the next thirty days. They have it already, which is also a little unheard of, and I think we just have to get the color correct, but... I think we just have to get the color correct, but, um...
They have to have the color to show.
My guess is
They said weather permitting and, and we have to do the site prep.
We've got some site prep to do, I would say absolutely by the first quarter, but I've set a target date at the end of January, weather permitting.
Okay.
They wanna ship it to us to pay for it for the end of the, to get a bill before the end of the year, is what I'm wondering.
They, they wanna do it fast and so we'll be, we'll be having some conversations with the Public Works Department this week, um, to talk about site prep. Uh, David wanted to talk to them about what they thought it would take and
Engineering.
Engineering, and then we'll get moving.
Okay.
So it'll be fast.
Good work, guys.
Thank you.
I like it. Thanks, Kevin.
Excellent, I, next thing on our agenda would be city commissioner reports. Anybody have reports from committees or, uh...
I have none.
Nothing for me. I, I was supposed to have a report, but they don't have, uh, the CTC, they have a quorum on that last week. There's some exciting things that they, uh, that they need to discuss and work on, so hopefully we can get a quorum next month.
Okay.
Try to get that, um, back on track. I don't have anything.
The only thing I have is, uh, I have a seat on a regional workforce development as mayor and that, my last meeting with them will be Thursday. And then Bill, I think, I would imagine Bill will take that spot, it's appointed by the county, so. That's coming up Thursday, is what I'm doing outside of here this week. And I guess I would make an announcement, the Mok family, I don't know all the story about this, but the M-A-K-K family, M-A-K-K Mok Studios are gonna be here this weekend and they are, uh, significant contributors of artwork and, and friends of the Koots Museum. Koots has several hundred thousand dollars of their paintings. And they're gonna be here, uh, they're a friend, as I understand it, they were friends of the Koots family. And, uh, this, this studio has done the portraits for Reagan and, painted portraits for President Reagan and Carter and, and for Slady Nancy Reagan and some others. And, uh, a couple are gonna be here for a couple of days, there's got some activities planned for the Koots. So if you want to kind of be a part of a Hawaiian luau, they're gonna have Hawaiian food trucks and stuff like that, as well as a public reception, I think, uh, Saturday evening. Anyway, nice to see the Koots, uh...
At the museum?
At the museum, yes, at the museum, thank you. So I know that's coming. I don't have anything else, barring a city manager, it's not, he's, unless we call him.
Um, I know that he would probably want us to say that, um, Halloween is next week, so we'll have trick or treat down the street. Downtown will be blocked off starting around three o'clock that day, I believe. We'll have some notices, go out on city, um, social media pages to let everybody know, but the downtown will be blocked off from about three to six-thirty or seven. And, um, all the businesses will be down there giving away candy for kids, so that's from four to six is the time of the actual event. Um, that's the trick or treat with Main Street each year, hosted by Main Street and, um, so that'll be happening and other than that, I, that might be about all the info next week, so.
Alright, any other business for the good of the order? Not having executive session, I'd have a mo- like, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I second.
Move and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned, thank you.